Good evening, everyone. Thank you for joining us on this August evening. We would like to call this regular meeting of the Board of Education to order. The next regular Board of Education meeting is on Tuesday, September 12th at 7:30 PM in the Board of Education meeting room. As you can see, we must be toward the end of August in the thick of summer by the attendance at the board table. We have some folks that are on vacation and traveling, so everyone deserves a break. So thank you for those of you that are in the audience. I think we have more people in the audience than we do at the board table. That might be a first in my time on the board. So thank you. I just hope everyone continues to have a really good summer. We're in the homestretch this week. Tomorrow, next week, school will be starting. I had the opportunity to speak to the new hires Monday morning at Tokonik, which was exciting. There was about, there was 35 new hires there, like the first day of school for them, all very excited. It was a great gathering and then a great meeting, and the administration put together a great day for them. I also popped in and spoke to the administration administrator's retreat last week also, which was here, and it was a full day session, and thanked them for all their hard work on behalf of the board and wished them all on a new school year. So I think it's always exciting, the start of a school year. Not sure the kids are all that excited till they get in a groove, but they'll wind down their summer pretty quickly. So it's also exciting. Ox Ridge, there's, as always, as you wind down a construction project, I was up there late yesterday. There's always plenty to do, but there is a tireless team and an incredible effort up there to get that school organized. They're still planning, moving dirt around and moving sod around. And the infamous slide, there was a meeting this afternoon on security and planting and fencing around the slide. So we'll work through all of that. It will be exciting, and we'll have kind of a celebration probably mid to late September with the full opening of that school and the consolidation of our ELP program up there. So it'll be really exciting. So again, thank you for continuing to come to board meetings and participate. I think it'll be an exciting school year ahead of us. With that, I will move it over to public comment. And anyone on Zoom, Michelle?
Anyone on Zoom would like to participate? Please use the raised hand icon. There are no raised hands at this time.
Thank you. Anyone from the audience, public comment at this time? Okay, thank you.
Do you want to amend the agenda?
Yes. Thank you, John.
May I make a motion to add the appointment of Maya Feldman as an assistant principal at the Oxford Elementary School?
I will second that. All in favor to amend the agenda? That is unanimous with all of us here. Thank you.
I had it after board committee reports.
Yeah, board committee reports. Good. Thank you. Thank you both. Great. With that, we will move on to Dr. Adley's superintendent's report.
Hi, good evening, everyone. It's nice to see everyone trickling back, and the school is getting ready. We have our facilities manager here this evening. I want to recognize them once they get up for the work that they've done, because the schools are in great shape, ready for our students. And an old colleague of mine, Glenn Legarney, is the executive director of CIAC, and he was the author of our report tonight. So I welcome Glenn to Darien, and thank you for what you do for the kids across Connecticut, and your advocacy, particularly in the area of athletics and extracurricular activities. Just as an update to the staff, and we essentially have three open positions at the moment. We do have a couple of long-term medical leaves that we're addressing, but the three positions that are currently open are the middle school math position, and we have two finalists who are coming tomorrow for that particular position. We have one special education resource position, which is at the high school, and we have one open speech language pathologist at the Ox Ridge School. So we're relatively in very good shape, and we're hope to fill those positions, obviously before the start of school here. We're working feverishly to do that. Thank you to Marge and the department for all of their efforts. We were the recipients of two mental health grants that you may have heard about, and one was about $130, $134, thereabouts, for personnel mental health over three years, and that will go towards the salary of our wellness coordinator. And then we also have received $100,000 for summer mental health programs, and some of those have actually started workshops for staff this particular summer. So we thank Dr. Dad for submitting that, and Rich also for the submission. And I think we were one of the only districts in the area that received the $130K for personnel, so that would be well received. And I think it in many ways recognizes the advocacy for mental health that the board has been supporting so supportively. Aspen will be open tomorrow for families, and that will be Wednesday, 23rd at 3 o'clock for classless bus assignments. Bus assignments will also be posted at the same time on the district website. All-staff convocation, if you want the breakfast, get there at 8. If you want to just be at the start of the program, 8:30 will kick off in the high school auditorium. You're more than welcome as members of the boards to attend that.
What date is that?
That's Thursday morning. It goes for about an hour, an hour and a half or so. As the chairman said, and I thank him for opening up our new teacher orientation, our new teacher orientation now is three days. Normally, it was two. I will say that Amy, Marge have planned wonderful learning opportunities, and as Amy said, it felt like we're learning side by side with our staff, and we weren't so cruxed for time to get things in that we can actually take a wee bit of time to breathe and reflect on things with our new staff. So that's, that's day three will be tomorrow. We're obviously looking forward to the first day of school. On Wednesday, I will be ready to receive our students. And thank you to the members of the cabinet for all of your organization of, Shirley's not on, but for your organization of these particular meaningful days in professional development. We look forward to welcoming our students back. Although you are, Shirley.
Shirley. Thank you.
Our student Swaha is taking a break, which is good and well deserved. So I'm sure our student representatives will be back in September. We'll move on to approval of the minutes. We have a motion to approve the minutes of the special meeting held on August 8th, 2023. Dennis, second by John. All those in favor, unanimous with everyone present. Thank you. We'll move on to any board committee reports. Been quiet. All right, good. We will move on to presentations and discussions.
Hold on.
Yes, sure.
I need to do the motion to appoint.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Good. Go ahead.
May I have a motion to appoint Maya Feldman as an assistant principal at Oxford School?
All those in favor. It is unanimous with everyone present.
Thank you.
I'm not sure if she was still tuned in, but she's on vacation in Florida. We had a good meeting with her earlier. So congratulations, Maya. Welcome to the district, and how exciting to start as an assistant principal in a, in a brand-new school. So we wish you well for the school year. Thank you, Sarah and John. We'll move on to presentations and discussions. Rich, you're going to update us on any changes from an enrollment perspective?
So overall, since the last board meeting, we gained 10 students. So our total enrollment is 4,575 K-12. K-5 students only went up by four students with no changes in class sections based on board of ed guidelines. Overall, we're down 11 students, so essentially a flat year over year.
Good. Thank you. Do you see anything, what's the activity like between now and next Wednesday?
Usually, it's pretty minimal. So we would think it'd be pretty minimal. Usually, if you get anybody, it's like move-ins. So we wouldn't expect any significant spikes.
Okay, good. Dave?
Anything close on sections or breaks?
So Ox Ridge, Ox Ridge 4th grade is the one that's closest, and it's one student per tip.
Thanks, Rich.
Good. All right. Thank you, Rich. Kevin, update on summer facilities. Some say you're busy during the summer.
Plenty of seats if you want to sit down. Thank you. No. Yes, very busy summer. Tons of capital projects, but also the emergency variety, as well as the planned and projected. So I don't want to start off on the negative, but I'm sure you guys read the memo, and the, the track was unfortunately delayed due to a manufacturing error in Georgia.
Could you just make that microphone, is that on, Kevin?
I believe it is.
That's better. Thank you, Kevin.
You're welcome. So the track has begun to take delivery of materials starting late last week, and we're going to start breaking ground as early as tomorrow. And that's less than ideal, but given all the rain that we had in July, we have to get moving on it sooner rather than later, otherwise this will trickle well into the fall. So as it stands, we're targeting the first of October. Other than that, all the projects have gone extremely well, and we were able to get them all done for the safety, security, and well-being of the students.
Go ahead, John.
So what's left on the track? I know the pavement's down. Ironically, I saw the first shipment come in during a wild downpour, right? So, but all kidding aside, what's left?
Sure. So they've begun making the markings on the exchange zones on the track, and what happens next is the base asphalt layer goes down, and then on top of that is the actual running surface, the crumb rubber that you'll see. So that's going to go in full swing, and weather is always the enemy. So we're praying for no rain, which will just slow down the process even further.
What's the cure time they need once they put the final coat on?
Cure time for the final coat is only a day or two. The, the problem is getting there. We need a good 20 to 25 days, uninterrupted workdays, no weather, no events, and we're going to do our best to squeeze it in.
Okay. Good. Yes.
Can you, Kevin and Alan, Kevin, first of all, thank you for all of your work over the summer. It's a lot in this few amount of months. Can you just talk to, so this, now that the track is not finished, it'll displace youth teams, town teams? Can you just talk to the communication that's happened amongst everybody, and let us know that everybody knows what they're doing and what the reaction has been?
Sure thing. So between myself, Sheila in my office, Chris Manfredonia, we've had meetings with all of our stakeholders. We've had to reshuffle the schedule slightly. Everybody's aware of the field space, how they're impacted, where they need to go, and we've done our best to have all those people work together and free up field space. If they're able to share, then everybody can have access to turf and grass fields around the district.
So everybody has a place to go?
That's correct.
So what period of time will that field actually be down for?
Right. So it starts tomorrow, and it'll be down until it's done. We did provide the vendor six dates where we asked them not to work, home football games, girls' field hockey events that we didn't want to move or pivot around. So he's aware of those and will plan accordingly.
So I hate to ask too much in the weeds, but how does a home football game work?
The home football game, if all goes well, should be uninterrupted, but you may see, if we're in the middle of the process, for example, the track will be protected, the game can occur, then the vendor will come back the following day, remove the protection, and get back to work.
So you've got to really orchestrate, and Mr. Manfredoni, I know you do this during normal games, but we've just got to make sure you've got the right team up there to make sure people know they've got a, there's a lot of people that walk around and roam around at those games on and off the field. So you've really got to have it buttoned up for the protection of the investments over there.
We have signage that's going up. We're putting out the message to the different stakeholder groups to notify people that if the gates are locked, please refrain from walking on the track.
Good. Good. Dave?
Rich, do we anticipate cost overruns given the delay from the manufacturer error?
Nope. So we have a contract for what was agreed upon, and so it's just a delay in time.
Thank you. On the flip side, what about more revenue, because we're not constraining some groups?
In terms of field rentals?
Yeah.
We might see a little bit. Part of the issue is they're going to have to share a little bit more, so we might not gain as much as, you know, one would hope. But nothing significant, neither positive or negative.
Does this affect anything during the school hours?
No. They'll be able to, they'll be able to use across country track part of it.
Thank you.
Good. Anything else on Kevin's report? Yes?
On the whole report or just that specific part of it?
No, on the whole report.
I guess my question is, you mentioned emergency repair. So what happened with our boilers and hot water heaters and all of that?
Sure. We had a four-inch copper line leaking at the high school, which we were able to schedule after summer school dismissed, but that was an all-hands-on-deck where we had to turn the water off for just under a day. The repair was made, and we're all set up with that one.
And then I just have a question on middlesex. You found some problems with the brickwork?
Correct.
Has a solution been found yet?
So we have a temporary Band-Aid solution to make it safe for the students. That'll go up later this week, but when we come into budget, we'll have a long-term presentation plan to rebuild that chimney in its entirety.
Thank you.
So is that safety that you're talking about scaffolding?
So the scaffolding is part of the long-term solution to rebuild the chimney. They have the lifts in place to safety net it and band it with steel for the, for the short term.
Okay. All right. Thanks, John.
I had the opportunity yesterday to go around all the schools with Kevin and with the staff members, and they're in great shape, inside, outside, really ready, ready to open.
I noticed the landscape work, just driving by, and a number of schools look great. Plus the rain makes everything a little greener this year.
Is your sign back up at the high school, Rich?
Sign will be in next week.
All right, good. Thank you. Any other board questions? Kevin, just a thank you to you and thank your whole team on behalf of the board. Your work never stops, but you kick it into high gear over the course of the summer. And, you know, when folks come in from out of town, whether it's people that work on the master plan or all the architects and people we have, you know, with all the work we have going on, they do compliment us on the shape of our schools and the maintenance of our schools, the physical building and the plant around it. So thank you very much. I think it's an important aspect of our schools. It's about a half a billion-dollar piece of real estate. And so just thank you to you and your team.
You're very welcome. Thank you.
Yay. Sure. Good. So thank you, Kevin. We will move on to discussion on athletics with the CIAC and Mr. Glenn Legarney. Legar, Garin? Sorry, Glenn. My last names. Lugareen. You're right. I'm reading, I'm reading. So Chris and Glenn, thank you for, for being here this evening. Glenn, thank you for the work around this. I think, you know, what we're trying to do is, you know, everyone comes to the board having read through the information. So if you want to go through at a high level and maybe talk about some points you'd like to reference, and then we'll open it up to board questions.
Sounds good, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Dr. Adley. Thank you for the opportunity and privilege to speak with you today. Upon looking at the review of the athletics program, so at CIAC, we do have a program that entails a more in-depth athletic review. There are five standards to our full athletic program review when we conduct those. This, we were looking at just one standard of those five. We were looking at for CIAC what we call standard three, which is our program resources and equity. Within that standard, there's nine indicators that we review, which include looking at it from a Title IX perspective, looking at equity, looking at the resources and facilities that we have for students, equipment, uniforms, and looking at opportunities for kids who are not involved in competitive athletics that exist for them, and also looking at opportunities for students in our special needs programs that give opportunities for those athletes as well. And then further, we dig into the funding and looking at not only what the district provides, but what is the relationship with booster clubs. So those nine indicators is what forms the, the initial part of the report that was provided for you. After that initial report, just looking at some of the specific questions that, from Darien, that was provided to us to be able to answer and, and be able to provide some feedback, and certainly we can talk more in detail of any, any item that you have. Certainly, upon review, I have to tell you, Darien has a very impressive program. We have seen this throughout the, throughout the state. We've seen this, you know, many years with the success of your programs, but also within what is shown to us and, and your student athletes and coaches and programs when they come to us and events off the field as well. At CIAC, we have programs in sportsmanship and leadership academies that we run, you know, beyond the competitions that we have, and Darien is always very well represented with its student leaders in those programs, and really speaks to the high-quality program that you have here in Darien. Much of that, I think, does have to do with the incredible resources that you have. Your students have access to some of the best facilities. Your students have access to some of the best coaches that, that we see as well. So it's really a tribute to the detail that goes into the hiring of positions that you have here, what your kids are being provided in terms of coaching. Chris does an outstanding job through athletic administration. He's one of our most veteran APs that we have in Connecticut. Does an outstanding job from managing everything that goes into an athletic department as well. The access that you have, the equity that you have within your program, again, raises no red flags and is very consistent with what we see across the state. And any athletic program, you're going to have some sports that have some higher cost to it. We see consistently across the state in some of those higher-cost sports where there is some expectation of support from parents that pay for those. The one that we see across the state is hockey, is very common that there's some additional funding that, that comes into those. And then there's a lot of club sports as well that certain schools have elevated to, you know, to those varsity statuses that CIAC doesn't sanction and run championships for. For example, girls' ice hockey, skiing, rugby, sailing. These are sports that, you know, do exist. There's definitely competitions for those, not governed by CIAC. And in those sports, it's very common throughout the state that we see supplemental funds being asked in terms of parent participation for that. From a, just very quickly, from a Title IX perspective, I think Darien, again, is doing an outstanding job. Access to facilities, access to equipment, equitable across the board. Again, keep in mind, while Title IX requires that, that we have equal access, equal access doesn't necessarily mean the same access. So you have to look at also the participants that, that are participating, the, the cost of various sports, but it is very balanced here in Darien. Impressively, you only have about a 2% differential of female athletes to, to male athletes in the state. So you're as close to anybody of having a 50-50 comparison is really what we see across the board, and that's attributed to what you are doing to promote female sports within the state as well. We're proud in Connecticut to have the most highly-recognized unified sports program in the country, and Darien is a great part of that as well. So providing access to kids at all levels to be able to participate is certainly something that you can take pride in here in Darien. And one of the pieces that was really impressed about as we dug into this more is what you're offering in terms of intramurals and, and opportunities for kids who aren't necessarily interested in being highly competitive. You know, within school sports, yes, school sports is truly the last classroom of the day. It's an extension of your school curriculum. We are an education-based program in our CIAC sports, so we do look to extend that. But there is a level of competition. We do expect, again, at the varsity level, you are competing for league championships. You are competing for state championships. And there is an expectation of skill level to participate on those teams and an expectation of competitiveness when you're competing on those teams. So, you know, with that, you want to have opportunities as well that you can provide for kids to stay engaged, to, to live those healthy lifestyles and engage in athletics that maybe aren't, don't have that interest in that competition. And you offer a wide, a wide variety of intramural clubs and activities as well, which, again, I think actually puts you close to the top as one of the leaders in the state of those intramural programs. So just an outstanding job by, by Darien and their athletics department and the work that you're doing there. With that, I'll give you an opportunity to, you know, kind of dig in deeper where you would like to, and any questions or any areas that you would like to direct me. I'm happy to go into further detail on what I've provided you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Board questions?
I guess, you know, I, I look at this, and thanks for giving an overall context and kind of where we stand relative to, you know, the, the rest of the state. So I appreciate that. We rarely get a look at that. I think my comments more directed inward about, you know, some of the findings, and you highlighted the fact that off-site sports, hockey particularly, have subsidies from parents. So I guess what I would like to learn, you know, going forward is the subsidy that parents provide for a sport like hockey, or I think it's sailing, skiing, swimming dive has no subsidy. It's an off-site sport. But those off-site sports, the relative parent contribution vis-à-vis the district, whether or not we line up, and I think, you know, Rich gave us a little data around some of, some of that. Yes, that, that's number one. Then two, you know, one of the areas that I want to focus on, I think I did the calculation, and, you know, the, the district provides over $1,000 per student from a budgetary, or per athlete, I should say, from a budget standpoint. But there are also some parent voluntary contributions. But what I'm interested in exploring for the next budget process is, you know, whether or not there should be some sort of participation fee. And I think your, your report finding, you said, more than a majority of districts, there is some sort of participation fee. So I'm not looking for you to answer those questions, but those are the kind of the two areas that I'm focused in going forward. But I really appreciate some of the other questions I get, you know, addressed in terms of equity and how districts handle different sports, you know, at cut process, I'm sorry, cut, no cut process, and that sort of thing. So I appreciate that. So it wasn't really a question to you, but it was raising, you know, some of the issues I want to focus on going forward as we go into next budget season.
I can give you some feedback on that if you'd like. So, you know, just hockey in particular across the, across the states. So, you know, I would be very confident in saying that we'd probably be a little bit over $1,000 per, per athlete would be, you know, pretty common across the state when it comes to hockey. The only hockey program that I know that isn't charging that is West Haven, and they own their own rink. So when the rink is operated by the board of it, it, you know, it makes it a little bit easier. So oftentimes, that's what we see. It's, it's what's the cost in going to those facilities. So, you know, if you're going offsite and you're using a YMCA or a local swim club or something for swimming, often those costs don't equate to the same of what it's going to cost for ice time at hockey. So, you know, we, we do see some balancing out in those. In districts where you implement pay to participate, whatever those fees are going to be, inevitably, the, the question comes up, is that going to reduce access? Or, you know, are, is it going to reduce numbers? And when there were not opportunities that were put in place to accommodate those of financial need, it absolutely reduced numbers. And so, you know, if you, you just have to be very clear that when you do that, that there are going to be opportunities for those who need that financial assistance, so that there is not going to be a reduction to any access for kids. But unfortunately, across the state, we have seen participation fees go in quite a bit, not just for athletics, you know, in some of the schools that I've previously been a principal at, I've seen that we've had institute those for things like theater programs, marching band programs, you know, other things as well to offset. Whenever you can avoid that, those are the best scenarios for, for families and, and kids, but it is common for that to be, for that to take most.
Sorry, I have one follow-up. So the, I think where we might be unique is the out-of-state competition.
Yep.
Given the competitiveness of, you know, some of our sports and them helping to, you know, compete against.
Sure.
So did you get a chance to look at the frequency of that, you know, within our district vis-à-vis other districts?
Yeah. So in this, and it's funny, it really depends on the area of the state. So in the northern part of the states where you're bordering Massachusetts, where you're bordering Rhode Island, it's pretty comparable to where you are in Fairfield County. So in Fairfield County, where you're going to play New York, New Jersey, Pennsylvania, you know, it's, it's fairly consistent. If you go to the northern parts and he's playing in Rhode Island, Massachusetts, fairly consistent. As you come closer to the center of the state, we don't see that travel as much. Where we see it in the center of the state is more of those big trips. So we might see, you know, a swim team who's going to Florida to, to train over winter break, or a baseball team or a softball team that goes to, for some reason, it's always distant. I see a wide world of sports. Yeah, they hold, in the wide world of sports down there, they hold a, almost like a high school week down there where they, they have teams from around the country that come down and play. We see golf teams go to Myrtle Beach and, you know, play. And each of those scenarios where they're going, the responsibility really is lying on the programs to fundraise the money to, to go on those trips. So, again, when we think about education-based athletics,
So again, when we think about education based athletics, what we're providing for our sports, we're providing equitable opportunities for our kids to engage in in competitive sports here on the high school campus. But when we're taking those trips beyond that, you know, it's really above and beyond, you know, what the average high school experience would be in that. So it's very common when those things happen that it is fundraised, even trips. You know, some of the smaller ones, I think I mentioned there, we see quite a few teams will schedule, you know, two schools will schedule to go down to up to New York to Cooperstown to play a baseball game. It's very, very common to see that. And we'll see the schools combine and fundraise money for the bus to go up there. Often we see the two schools even combine and go on the same bus. So they use it as an opportunity from kids from different schools to come together, enjoy that experience, compete, you know, and come back together the next day. So, you know, but again, they fundraised the money for those.
One last follow up, just what about the cross border short day trips, if you will? Do you see that they fundraised or do you see districts paying for those? I'm thinking Stonington to Rhode Island or, you know, up in the by corner somewhere in Massachusetts.
Right. So oftentimes, and I think almost all the time, those trips require coach busing. Because I don't believe our school buses will cross over the state lines much time, many times. So, so with those, it is common to to fundraise the difference in the transportation. So there may be an allocation for, you know, each away game for four buses. And, you know, so the school may pay for what would take you, you know, to that border. And again, you, it's a bit of a gray area, right? Because as a district, you do need to provide transportation. So when you're providing that transportation to and from and you're thinking, you know, how do you subsidize that? But it is common that there will be some kick in from fundraising money to get that coach bus.
Thank you.
Have you seen anything across the street in terms of the fundraising for the nice to haves? And that you've got a, you know, a football lacrosse team that can raise significant dollars for the nice to haves versus some of these smaller teams don't have that fundraising capability for the nice to haves. Is there any methodology you've seen? I hate to use the word cap on fundraising, but I have heard that, you know, being used before.
Yeah. So in districts where that's been a question or a concern, the most common remedies that we've seen to that is for a percentage of fundraised funds that would go towards a general fund. So, you know, it might be 5%, it might be 10%. So if you think about that, you know, 10% of what's going to be raised by 120 kids in a football team is certainly going to be greater than 10% of, you know, the kids on a tennis team. But when it's coming into that general fund to be used and that fund can be used for things like the busing, transportation, you know, any of those costs, we've seen some of that be used. Well, you know, the district will designate what it can be used for. Obviously, uniforms, transportation, like you said, those nice to haves. Now you're starting to be a little bit more equitable, right? Because 10% is equal, it's 10%. It's not the same because you're going to have more come from football than some of those smaller sports or lacrosse. But, you know, now you've you've created a bit more of an equitable situation. The other strategy that we've seen is caps, just put on what can be, what can go towards, you know, certain things. So, you know, maybe they, we've seen places where they'll say, you can only spend, you know, X amount of dollars on postseason bankless. Individual gifts for kids or spare wear gear for kids, you know, can't, it can't exceed X number of dollars. That is another way that that we've seen that issue be addressed across the state. And within those communities, it's worked for them to to address those concerns.
Thank you.
Because I'm going to pick up on Mr. Senior's questions about the participation fees. Does CAC have a best practice of whether it's per student, per family? Are there suggestions if we're thinking about potentially going down this route?
Yeah, it varies so greatly from district to district. Honestly, best practice is still to to use it as a last resort. If you don't have to charge those participation fees, don't charge them. But, you know, it's very difficult to create that standard because, you know, what an appropriate standard might be in a DIRK A district will be very different from what it would be even if, you know, a DIRK C or D district. So when we look at that from a statewide program, we just stay consistent with the best recommendation is avoid it if you can.
Dennis?
Is there any, any thought or general practice on what constitutes the, because you have in here bus shortage, driver shortage for busing, but more thinking of just, is there a minimum time or mileage that should be a coach bus versus a school bus? Or is it the championship meet should be school? But, you know, is there any determination on what determines a coach bus versus a school bus?
Yeah, that's usually determined, again, district by district and and almost similar to the participation fee. I think you could, you know, really almost look at it where, you know, once you're beyond, you know, really DIRK B schools, very rarely will we see communities that can afford even fundraising wise to to provide those those coach buses going longer distances. So it is, you know, again, that would be something that as a district, if you wanted to set a distance limit or, you know, look at a postseason limit for that. But it's what is the community, you know, sees as the reality of being able to supplement the funding to do that, you know? In my time as an administrator, I served in three districts. Two of those districts, we couldn't even consider that at any level, even through fundraising. And in another district, we were able to provide that for, you know, lengthier trips generally. You know, if we were going to travel greater than an hour, we were able to to supplement and provide that through some fundraiser funds. So again, that's going to be district to district. And I'd say, once you're out of DIRK B, maybe some DIRK C schools. It's rare that we see that across the state.
Did you say earlier though, at some point in Rich, I don't know, based on our contract, is there a, there's an issue with busing in terms of crossing state lines sometimes where we'd have to look for a coach type bus?
And yeah, and again, that might be bus company by bus company. You know, one of the bus companies, several of the bus companies I know, you know, the school bus companies won't cross state lines. Others will. It's your bus companies per view on that.
Rich, any additional color on that?
So, I mean, some bus companies won't cross state lines, some won't even go on highways as an example. The last two years specifically, we've definitely had a driver shortage, which has impacted transportation where normally you would have a school bus and you had to get a coach bus because you had no other option, otherwise you wouldn't have the transportation.
Sure.
So even as we go into next year, we're still not fully staffed. We're pretty close, but not fully staffed. So you're still going to have those issues with whether or not you can provide a regular school bus versus a coach bus.
So if we, if we need a coach bus just from a driver shortage and that's what's available and that cost is absorbed by the district?
Correct.
Okay. And is there any, any difference on any of our neighbors that own their own buses? Do they also, do they just strictly use their own buses?
Nobody in Fairfield County owns the larger school buses. There are a couple of districts further north like Lastonberry, for example, that own, you know, the 72 passenger buses and run their own bus company. But down here, everybody's either using First Student, DATGO, SDA, and those are the primary vendors in this area.
So they all go through a similar process, coach, no coach, depending on?
Yep. And depending on where you are, I mean, we were very lucky. And I'd say in the last two years, I mean, normally, you know, three, four, five years ago, we have at least four large buses for the high school for sports after school. In the last two years, we'd be lucky if we get two. Some districts like Newtown and Milford and Bethel, they don't have enough buses to actually get their kids to school, let alone athletics. So it really is a, you know, a location by location.
Thank you, Rich.
Yeah, no, no questions. I guess I would just comment. I know athletics has been coming up in my entire five years on the board. I think this is a terrific exercise. I really appreciate seeing all the information, data gathered in one place. And it was really nice to hear that after all the concern and consternation, actually been doing it pretty much right the whole time. So glad we have this in front of us as a resource and hopefully we can move forward to some other work. Thank you.
Thanks, Dave. Julie, Sarah, whatever your name is.
So I agree that this is a good start. I think we definitely have some tweaks that we can, we could focus on. I'm wondering about, and you said that you were impressed by our intramural offerings. Chris, can you speak a little bit about what's, how many children actually take part in those at the high school? I know we've had that somewhere and I've been looking for it and I can't find it.
Yeah, I mean, I think we have the most robust program over the middle school. There's lots of different offerings, we have lots of different students. I think the board has a packet of information where we have a number of kids who participate in sports there. It's not as robust at the high school and elementary school, but I think the middle schools where we see the most participation in those integral program at school.
Do you see that there could be space for an intramural program? And we're talking about the cut, no cut and kids not having a place to land after freshman year and that kind of stuff. Is there, is there a need for that?
Physical space or just, physical space is always tight, as you know. You know, I think a lot of kids look, you know, what do we call intramural or club? We have a lot of kids who are starting new clubs on a almost daily basis at the high school. And we've, you know, have a process for starting clubs, you know, that are more athletically driven. We work to find space for those kids to, you know, be able to, you know, express those athletic endeavors. So I think, you know, I think we're always opening to new ideas and offerings and you're happy to, you know, entertain kids and what they want to, you know, see that we as a school offer.
I mean, you know, again, when you do kind of the math, we're spending well over $1,000 per athlete. I actually did it versus the number enrolled, but my math is flawed. And we show, you know, we have 950 high school students playing, you know, sports and we spend what just under 1.5 million on sports. So that, I mean, those are taxpayer dollars. So, you know, it's a significant, you know, dollar amount. And so that's where they, again, I get the point. If we don't have to do participation fees, we should try to avoid it. But at the same time, some of our peer districts that have, you know, similar resources have instituted modest fees. Certainly don't want to impact the, you know, number of students would want to make any means available so any student can play. But I guess, you know, I think going forward, we got to figure out, you know, if there are maybe, you know, the days point, we looked at everything and, you know, we're managing it perfectly. You know, are there a couple of things that we should look at in the next budget season? But I don't know if we're going to decide anything right now.
Good, sir.
Coming back to that participation fee, so we do have a lot of voluntary parental contributions. And, you know, the way that they're presented sometimes doesn't necessarily seem very voluntary. Like if you go on, I was on my school bus the other day and there's the football thing that doesn't, the word voluntary is not there. It's just here's a, here's the football charge or whatever it's phrased as. So I'm just curious, you know, if we do do a participation fee, we would, I, my feeling is that we should not do another voluntary contribution on top of that. Right? So how, I don't, is there, are there districts that do both? Is that excessive? Is there, I mean, just would love to know what other districts are doing in terms of that.
Definitely do both. I mean, I think every, every school district that that I'm aware of who does charge a participation fee, they also fundraise within their sports as well. So, you know, as you said, how that's designated in the process that, you know, terminology that's used there, you know, may be, may be different. But every district does some sort of fundraising where they, where they can. That may not be the same. I think here there's equal opportunities throughout the sports to be able to do that. Where, you know, sometimes when we get into our more urban districts, it's, it's not as diversified. But there is definitely fundraising happening across the board, even when there's participation fees.
Thank you, Sarah. Rich, just on your sheets here, so you break out student activity expenses. These are all for the clubs and all in the back, right? And then you broke out robotics and intramurals. Okay.
Just for the record, it's just been posted ever now?
It hasn't been given out to the audience who are here this evening, but it will be posted.
Yes. So this was in response, I just, we had to break down all the sports related fees starting in June at the finance committee. So I just asked to embellish it through non-sport related extracurricular.
So I think we're, you know, to Dave's point of the time on the board and my time on the board too, we've looked at this, you know, a number of times. You know, we've done some good work, working with the Y and and stuff like that and kind of streamlining some of those contracts. But I think we've got a lot of data here. You know, we don't have a full board. You know, at some point, I think the board has to think through, there's, it looks like we did number three out of one through five that you provide. Be interesting to see what, you know, the other components are of a review. I think what the board has talked about over time is what does this look like in terms of extracurriculars? Within that, there's clubs, there's councils and there's sports. So, and, you know, to the point, I think this gives a really good insight as to how we're doing, you know, the ratios of young ladies to young men. So I think, you know, what the board has to think about on a go forward basis, I think is what, what's the goal here? I think you've got to go out and say, what are we trying to get to? You know, I'm not sure equity is the right word, just based on the numbers in the sports and the cost associated with some of the facilities. You know, we're not going to have a swimming pool, we're not going to have an ice rink. So, you know, those are known things. So then you have to get to the point of what does it look like to make everyone feel like they're on the same page as a participation fees? Is it some look at how fundraising is done? So, but I think the takeaway for me is we've got to really think through, what are we actually trying to get to here? I don't think we fully define that. And throwing the word equity around isn't going to, isn't the right word to use. So that's kind of my thought process on a go forward basis. I think the rest of the board should look at this data. Thank you very much. I think this is a good step. We've never kind of had an outside look in. So I think this has been very helpful. Rich, you know, can put the numbers together like nobody. So this gives an accurate view, but that's kind of my thoughts on next steps.
Dennis? Sorry, just one last, one question on this with the student activity expenses, the sheet we were just handed. The, I personally, I find flaws in lumping band, chorus and orchestra in with, because those are academic classes, no? So I find a flaw putting that as a club and council. To me, that's an academic class along with middle sex, band as well or orchestra.
Or these extracurricular activities tied to those.
So at the, how did you break that? Yeah. So it's anything that's considered a club and council in your budget. So like the theater and things like that, those are clubs and councils within your budget. They might be academic related, but they are considered clubs and councils in terms of how you categorize them in the budget.
So band, if there is considered a club and council?
So like theater, for example, band at the high school, band at the middle school. We did not include the All Town Music Festival and things like that, what you see at the elementaries, which is our clubs and councils in RC 13. But these are considered your clubs and councils, how you define them.
But to Denny's point, band, orchestra and chorus are, are academic classes where you get a grade, correct? So.
It's actually.
That's accurate, right? So to me, that's not a club and a council, which is an extracurricular.
Correct. That's a great.
Going forward, can we, is our, this has to be a board decision, but can we pull out that and put that into our actual budget that's not, you know, in our curricular budget?
Well, we'll have to look at the actual cost expenses for the classroom part of it because sometimes these, these actually then go into even activities and different other.
So there's a, there could be a component to Dennis's point, Sarah's question. There could be opponent within these, component within these dollars, Rich, that are, that are more associated with extracurricular than the.
So the stuff that hits like the student activity accounts, for example, those are kind of like the, the after school events that you might have. But you have advisor stipends, for example, that are also considered clubs and councils within your budget that might be more curricular.
I agree.
Good. All right. Good question. Thank you very much. Appreciate your time.
My pleasure. And again, if there's anything you'd like to dig deeper into, happy to to come back and and do that with you. And, you know, just an FYI for you, you're probably about a couple of months away. So the program that we use in evaluation is being adopted by the New England Association of Schools and Colleges. So we're working with them and we anticipate, you know, maybe by December, January, that NEAS will have a version of this that will be adopted and be not mandatory, but optional for schools when they go through accreditation. So there will be an accreditation body behind some of this work, you know, within probably about six months.
So will this count for accreditation?
This is exactly the work that you would have to do to compile the data for it.
This is a lot of cutting bases.
I do want to thank Glenn as a director because he was quick to just say yes to this project, take it on himself and not delegate to another. I, I do want to thank Glenn Isaac, director, because he was quick to just say yes to this project, take it on himself and not delegate to another staff member. And so I very much appreciate his time.
Appreciate it. Thank you. It's kind of our first outside looking in, so I think it's been helpful. We've asked a lot of the questions that you answered, so, as I said, the board has worked.
My pleasure.
Thank you very much. Chris, thank you. Appreciate it. We'll move on to the next section, first reading and discussion and proposed revisions to, oh, let me wait for Dr. Adley. Good. First reading and discussion on proposed revisions to Board of Education Policy sixty-two-ten, Program of Instruction Curriculum Textbooks and Other Instructional Materials. So this comes to the board after kind of very good lengthy discussion at the curriculum committee meeting. Policy, curriculum, policy meeting, sorry, reading one thing and saying the other. So this is specific to sixty-two-ten. Marge, do you want to kind of kick it off? I know you put together a good memo.
I did want to clarify that if we adopt sixty-two-ten in whatever version, it would encompass sixty-six-ten. So we would need to repeal sixty-two-ten and sixty-six-ten with one of the new policies. So I think as we explained before, Shipman and Goodwin had vetted a policy about the selection of curriculum, adoption of curriculum for another district. So this is not their model policy, they don't have one, but instead of having them do the work all over again, the administration proposed that policy. Mr. Brown, I, I don't want to speak for you, so maybe you want to speak to your policy?
No, I would actually speak to your memo to kick it off, Marge. At the last sentence, I mean, you, it says, "The policy committee is seeking guidance from the Board of Education on this fundamental issue prior to the review." And it's a question of whether we want to have model policies or whether we can actually do work at the policy level and generate and perhaps do some other things, look for guidance from shipment or look to guidance from the board itself. So as I see the issue before us today, it's really that gating issue of how would the board like the policy subcommittee to proceed in its work? Mr. Chairman, I would respectfully submit, given that we're barely a quorum, perhaps since the question here is what's the full board's opinion or full board's take? That's maybe not a question we should get into today and perhaps we should consider.
I just want to also, no, thank you, Dave. Appreciate that, Marge. So at the end of the day, also sixty-two-ten was approved by the board in February of two thousand and twenty-three.
What was that? Sixty-six-ten was approved.
Right.
Two thousand.
Yeah, sixty-six-ten was actually revised October eleventh of two thousand and twenty-two.
Right. Okay. And then through the, through the policy committee, there was conversation about potential changes and updates to that, which is kind of the work that you went through.
So the, the chair of our committee brought forth the idea of adjusting that. Yeah.
Can we just back up and do a timeline?
Yep.
So December of two thousand and twenty-two, we discussed reviewing policies related to curriculum. And it was, my understanding was curriculum review was kind of focused, because that was, we received a lot of input. The curriculum committee went back.
Policy committee.
I'm never going to get this right now.
I know.
Okay, so the policy committee went down that road.
That was in October. So this sixty-six-ten was, was approved by the entire board in October of two thousand and twenty-two, so less than a year ago.
Correct. So you went down the road, maybe Dave and Sarah, you can help me. You went down the road to look at policies also related to the curriculum review policy, which is a total, I don't want to confuse everybody, separate from these two policies.
So there was a request from the board to develop a policy about challenging curricular material.
But that's not part of these.
Correct. But in, within that policy, this is, it's adjacent, Dave, you want to speak?
Sure. So in sixty-six-ten, the one that was recently adopted discusses the district curriculum leadership team. And so in contemplating, well, does that work really belong with the district curriculum leadership team? Or perhaps should we pull that work away? That was going to implicate this policy, hence why the scope broadened from the original charge.
Got it. Perfect. And that's very helpful. So, and it's a very short policy, the one that was. So then the policy committee went to administration to help obtain guidelines for maybe a revision of these two policies, sixty-six-ten, sixty-six-two-ten, right? Because they, they almost run parallel or congruent.
Yeah. And, and again, so looking at the policies, not, you know, we can't just take a snapshot of one. There's going to be interplay amongst the various policies.
Okay, so that's awesome.
And then for me, going through the process, so the idea of me to have a policy or to have a rule or to have a contract or to have something, draft that, write the whole thing, do the research, figure out how to write it, look at those issues, map it out. And then perhaps I have to go to outside counsel for a specific issue. I have a tax question, I have an arrest question. That's what I do all day. So for me to sit down and write this from scratch, to pull sources, to look at resources, to pair of statutes, and then want to go to a very simple question to outside counsel, because I'm not a subject matter expert in Connecticut education law, is there anything here that would be objectionable or poor under current Connecticut statute? So that really on these questions was the focus question I had for Shipman and Goodwin. Hey, I wrote this, I think I stand behind it based on my understanding. Is there anything here that I really got wrong from a legal perspective that I should take out? Now I present it to the board and we could have a discussion, how about this one? How about that one? And for instance, the one policy we had taking away the district leadership review committee, I changed that where the superintendent became personally responsible for the goal of having not a committee responsible, but an individual to highlight the issue and to get to the question of policy committee. Where do we think that proper role is and what's the level of accountability we want to have? So things are written strategically for that to focus on different approaches. And what we would like to do is be able to have the policy committee have that meeting, have that discussion, see which point of view we'd like to take. But where the roadblock came is the issue of am I able to reach out to Shipman and Goodwin? Which has been what the practice has been for other policy chairs have been able to reach out to Shipman and Goodwin. Somehow I wasn't.
That's not true.
This awkward.
That's not true.
Okay, anyway.
She, she ran the board that much too.
Fair enough. Okay. So, anyway, so that, that seems to be the conundrum we're in. And again, I, I feel we're going a little down the road too much. I was just trying to give background. But if we're going to have substantive committee, you see a substantive discussion at the board level, maybe that's not best today.
I mean, we're, we're a quorum, it's on the agenda, so let's at least get started.
Yeah, I don't disagree. I don't disagree. Anything you want to add there, Sarah?
I mean, I, I just think that, that the process has always been at the policy committee, subcommittee level, is that we discuss as a subcommittee whether or not there are things we want to change in a, in a proposed policy from our legal counsel and then go back to them and say, hey, can you adjust that? So this was a change in that policy. And I also want to just clarify the memo, I just want to clarify the memo that Marge put out and Dave put out. So the fundamental issue here is, is whether or not the curriculum, who should be the curricular leaders and who should be on that district, the team of people creating curriculum. I don't think the fundamental issue is what you were just stating. I think the fundamental issue is who we want on that team.
When, when you say team, what do you mean?
The district leadership team. Curriculum team, the district curriculum leadership team, that's in sixty-six-ten. And I think to Dave's point, he, and I don't want to put words in your mouth, you, you wanted to expand that to include board members.
Well, I think if you look to the comments we were hearing that Mr. Seeny referenced earlier, we were hearing a lot from the community and there was a lot of consternation to, you know, I want to paraphrase inelegantly what was said, but people felt that there was no accountability that this just was the same. People who were putting in material that people had questions about, they would look at it and then, of course, they would just put it right back in without explanation. There were, there were people who were disappointed with that process and were looking for the board to take steps to improve the level of accountability in this process. The process I wrote very dramatically changed that and took it away from the committee and put that to Alan. It also created a mechanism where Alan would have to explain to us why it was being included or not included. It also had a process whereby it would be introduced back any curriculum materials once we understood what the curricular tieback was for that particular material being introduced or why there was no better material available. And then further, the board would have one last chance where if Alan decided, yes, you want to put this in, the board could actually say, you know what, we're going to overrule you on that. So it was a very different process than sort of this black box development.
So just from a process standpoint, I guess my question first is, does the board support the embellishment of these two policies in the merging, right? That's first, because if it's no, we just passed the policy in October eleventh, two thousand and twenty-two, then this whole exercise of movement. All right. So I actually think there's been some good work done. I'm looking at two memos here, or I'm sorry, proposals here. And I think, I like the embellishment of the policies in the merger person. Okay, but that's just a start and then there's differences between the two. But if we don't come to a consensus whether or not we have to change them, then this is a wasted exercise.
Yeah, and I think, Marge, there's some benefit to pulling the two together, you and I discussed.
Yes, and even though we didn't take action on sixty-two-ten, Shipman and Goodwin had reviewed it and said we didn't need to take action on it, but that if we wanted to. So they've both been reviewed by council within the current year, within the last year rather.
So I support the, sorry, but I support the exercise of actually embellishing these, because again, the existing policy is one parent and it's, yeah, so, so, so I think that's the road we should continue to go down. Now, if we want to tonight compare the two, first, I want to make sure everybody else agrees.
I, I personally agree and, and I like the embellishment. And I guess my question goes back to you. Does that answer your concern or do we need to go further? Because that part is still, I'm very blurry as to what are charges on this act, on this agenda item.
So one question that came up in the policy committee was how do we actually do this? There was a thought of going line by line through the documentation, which didn't make a lot of sense, but we.
I guess my question is, I don't know what changed.
And then.
The new policy committee to the old policy committee. I mean, you had a series of policies that you reviewed. The, they would be reviewed by Shipman and Goodwin. If there are any changes, they would be proposed to the policy committee or a model policy would be sent for review. The policy committee would then review that, agree, disagree, or, I don't like the word embellish, but that's the word of the night. But I don't, I don't understand, you know, what's changed in terms of that process. That process has worked. I, I appreciate you, Dave, going out and drafting your own policy, but I think that puts you in a difficult position because your, your, your view might be different than others, just from a conservative standpoint or a liberal standpoint or a political standpoint. And I think, you know, there's a feeling here of you looking to insert your thoughts in here, which are fine. But I don't think a subcommittee should have, does not have the authority to go and an individual in a subcommittee draft a policy and go have Shipman and Goodman look at it. I don't think that's how a subcommittee should work.
So my question is, why can't you use the draft that has been provided by ship, work in your subcommittee and insert some of these thoughts, which I think some of the thoughts are actually pretty darn good.
So how do you even, so I, I guess, presuming, Duke, that that never happened before, fine, we'll leave that there. How do you envision that process?
I don't want to get in an argument with you, but I, everything seemed to be working until you, you got involved, so to speak, and you're trying to ram down your policy down everyone's throats.
Well, I would agree with you completely.
But that's how it came across from a policy.
So maybe it came across, but I didn't write this and say we're throwing shipment in the trash. I wanted guidance from shipment to make sure it was conservative.
But you didn't go through the process. You should, if you wanted to.
So what's that?
Insert this into the committee.
Which process?
You should have brought this to the committee and said, hey, I spent time drafting a policy and bring the policy to the commit, to the committee. And you, you had no right to go or request or put the administration, you know, in a position of saying, all right, the chair of the subcommittee wants me to run this by Shipman and Goodwin and it hasn't even been run through the committee yet. That's like you trying to ram your thoughts down the process. Just, it's not right. And I don't see what was wrong with the existing process that we had. And I, I don't disagree with any conversation at this table that if we want the policy committee to go back and look at what you proposed and match it up against the model policy and have that discussion, that's fine. But I think you immediately offset the committee and it became you and Tara against Sarah and Julie. And I think it was just in bad form.
So I would agree with you, minus a couple of exceptions, but the, the main point would be that this was shared with administration, it was never shared out to anyone else. So I think there were some issues there in terms of how that probably could have played out where things could have been better. And to your question of how should this work, whether somebody drafts and proposes or whether we use shipment as a starting point to move back from that, I don't really see what the difference is other than, you know, one will have a lot more strikeouts than the other, fine. But how would you propose that the committee actually does that work? Do we circulate drafts? Do we not circulate drafts? I'm not certain the best way to do that, given some of the foyer and other issues that we have.
In the past, we have not created drafts. We have sat around the table and said, this is shipment's model. I like paragraph A, I don't like paragraph B. Here's what I would like that to say. What do you think about that? And then we would have a conversation together. That's what would have happened in the past.
May I make a suggestion that, because again, I think, you know, I, I look at your transparency paragraphs, I think there's room to include that in the model. I mean, is there any way that you guys can go back and use, you know, the admin, it's the administrators proposed through shipment new policy and take, and then discuss whether or not there's certain aspects of your proposal that the committee would be interested in going inserting, then come back to the board? And even if the committee says no, the board's going to make the final determinations in that discussion, you know, through retro process.
I, I mean, I'm amenable to any process that everybody thinks would be productive, so we certainly don't have to go to one. This idea though, that we can only act on shipment, nobody can actually propose or do anything. And what you're saying is contrary to that, which I think is fine. People should be able to propose and do other things, whether it's in response or whether it's on their own, it doesn't necessarily have to be a response to shipment.
Oh, sure.
Because transparency, as you point out, wasn't in.
With this, Dave, is this came to me via the administration and that the administration was asked to run this by shipment and Goodwin, and it hadn't been run by the subcommittee. That's in its simplest form. So I think, you know.
I see it playing out is you're going to, there might be certain aspects that won't pass the subcommittee, because maybe it's going to be too tough. Again, I don't mean to forecast or prejudice this process, but I think it's going to come back to the board, but you guys are going to have thoughtful discussions. And I, I dislike the attorney vetted versions of, you know, model, but I'm not, again, I think there's some valuable input here. But I think by using the kind of attorney vetted version and then looking to insert or exclude parts of that works a heck of a lot better than a unilateral proposal that your subcommittee didn't support.
So to that point, good, all conversation, everyone's, everything's on the table. But Sarah, are you in agreement? It's tough without two other members of the committee here, but I would, my recommendation would be, I think, is just go back to the policy committee and you've got a draft proposal, you've got shipment and Goodwin. Work through those two policies and see what you come out with to bump up to the board.
And I think, you know, I don't want to forecast either, but there, there, I'm not saying that your, that the, the, your version of sixty-two-ten is awful. Like there is definitely, there are some great pieces in there. Then I cheer put to both of your points about transparency. Sure, we could certainly codify some of that. That makes sense to me. And but the, the process of it, having a conversation among the subcommittee is, is important. So I'm, I'm fully supporting going back.
Right. So this will go, we'll go back to the subcommittee. Everyone has the draft and then everyone has shipment's model policy and you'll work on putting that together. Does that make sense?
Dr. Adley? If it may, and certainly in respect to Mr. Brown, this is an occasion, whether it's a policy committee or a curriculum committee or some other committee, where, it's in rare occasions, but occasionally there is an impasse between the committee and they cannot resolve something. This is one of those situations, and for instance, to Brian, this is presented. This is one of those situations, and in fairness to Brian, this is presented because it's an impasse with the one that is on the table at the minute, and.
But I think we've worked through that. I think everyone that's at the table right now is in agreement that there are components of both that they could work through. I think the committee got tied up a little bit, I understand, got tied up in the process. And, you know, the shipment and Goodwin involved, so.
And you might come to an impasse.
Great, and then, and then, and then, here are two options that we were at an impasse with.
I think.
You would like to.
Essentially, that is what this represents, we're going to pass a couple of pictures, is that firm, Mr. Brown?
No, I think this was really a gating question on procedure, and I think that's been answered here. So that, that was really it, was the full board to tell the subcommittee, the policy subcommittee, how we should work together to go through these things. And now we have our answer. So thank you.
All right.
Not only because Dr. Adley and I watched the meeting multiple times and my takeaway, which, tell me if I'm wrong, it won't be the first time, was that the impasse was whether the, not only the procedure, but also whether the curriculum committee of the district would be the district leadership committee or a subcommittee of the Board of A. And at that point, the policy committee said, it's two to two, we need the board to tell us who they want the curriculum.
That's what I understand, if I were to forecast, then we will come to the same, same impasse of some people want Board, Board of Education people on the district committee, some don't.
But that's only one section.
That's only one.
So you'll come to us.
Will come to us and say we come with that.
That may, that may be the only impasse and then we'll have the full board.
And the board may be different by the time that comes back to us as well.
Yeah.
But there'll be different parts, maybe you agree.
All right.
So one more, one more shot.
All right, good. Appreciate the conversation. All right.
Mr. Chairman, sorry, I don't mean to be, can you speak very clear as to what you want that subcommittee to do?
The subcommittee is going to go back with the model shipment policy with Mr. Brown's draft of the policy, and they're going to work through what the ultimate policy should look like from those policies or anything else that anyone on the committee wants to ask.
Come back with one draft for us.
Yeah, all right. Thank you. Marge, anything on the personnel report? Good. Michelle, we'll go back to public comment.
Good evening. Would anyone in person like to participate? You have, please state your name and address, you'll have up to three minutes.
Joanna Walsh, seventeen Pleasant Street. Just going back to the athletic report. I think a lot of people were looking forward to the report because we were hoping that it would more resemble the report that came out about the DAAG. And this report didn't discuss or enter into anything about stake, like other stakeholders, no parents, no no kids, no coaches. And so it's a lot, it's hard to talk about equity and what you want to do about these things if you don't have everybody's perspective of what's actually going on. So I would just ask if you could somehow work that in next time.
Could I ask for a clarification? You said DAAG, I'm sorry.
DA, the gifted and talented report from like 2021 that.
No, that wasn't, that wasn't, I, I hear you, Joanna, that wasn't necessarily a goal of this report. I think that's where I said the board's got to go back and make a decision on what their goal is that the if I'm correct, you want all the stakeholders to make sure they have participation and feedback.
Well, I just a report on what they think and feel, how they're treated, you know, whether that's, you know, based on, it would just be based on their perceptions. But I, I feel that the board communicated to the community that this would be a report that was much more in-depth than what was delivered, not just from the, you know, I can read the, anybody can read the handbook. And we hear Mr. Van Fredoene talk all the time.
To me, the way the conversation went, I think, is, I appreciate the questions, but I think Alan, again, broad conversation, I think Alan thought a good first step was going down this path with the CICA, so. But your, your comments are noted, thank you. Anyone else?
Anyone else in person? If anyone online would like to participate, please use the raised hand icon.
All right.
No raised hand at this time.
May I have a motion to adjourn? Mr. Maroni, second, by Sarah, all those in favor?